So bear with me as far as that part goes. And I'll have Judith help me read some of the things out. So just a quick explanation on that. I apologize. All right, if we can have a roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Present.
Alderman Spagaddis.
Present.
Alderman Talonair.
Here.
Alderman Parker.
Here.
Alderman Shep. Absent. Alderman Geenan.
Here.
Alderman Clark.
Here.
Mayor Tomes.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll stand for the Pledge Allegiance and also remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Item number five.
Minutes of the September 10th, 2018 meeting.
Move to approve the minutes as printed.
Second.
Moved to second. Is there any discussion? Are you none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item number six.
Minutes of the executive session of September 10th, 2018.
Move to approve.
Go ahead.
Move to approve the executive session minutes.
See.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Item seven. Update.
Update Rock Island. Thursday Night Groove Concert Series. The Thursday Night Groove Concert Series continues at Shreveport Riverfront Park on Thursday, September 27th, 2018 with local band First Impression. The event is open from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Rock Island Happy Joes will have pizza for sale and Bent River Beer will be available for purchase. Guests are encouraged to bring long chairs. For more information, please call 309-732-7275. Fall Community Garage Sale. Over 6,000 square feet of shopping for toys, trinkets, furniture, clothing, antiques, and much more for this year's Fall Community Garage Sale. Event will be held at Longview Park on September 29th, 2018 from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Vendor space is available by calling 309-732-7275. Admission is free, so come check it out. Rock Island Unplugged. Please join city leaders and department directors as they organize the first-ever Rock Island Unplugged on Thursday, October 11th, 2018 at the establishment located at 220 19th Street in Rock Island. This is an informal yet structured event aimed at citizens to have an open dialogue with city officials on city happenings. Orders, non-alcoholic beverages, and a cash bar will be available to those that attend. The event is scheduled to start at 6:00 PM and go to 8:00 PM.
Thank you very much. Item number eight.
An ordinance amending Chapter 11, Article 5 of the Code of Ordinances relating to the preservation of historically or architecturally significant properties. Second reading.
Move to pass the ordinance?
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Aye.
Spagaddis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Shep.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item number nine.
A special ordinance authorizing acquisition of 16 tax auction properties in the city of Rock Island in the amount of $14,442.
Move to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. If I could, if we could have CED to come up, I had a few questions about this. Thank you, Chandler.
Yes, sir.
The understanding I had in the past of the properties that we tore down recently, I think there's what, nine of them to be tore down?
I believe so.
Okay. These properties we're buying, the city owns, correct?
I'm sorry, one more time?
The city owns these properties here if we hold on this?
If we buy these, we will own them, yes.
Okay. The nine properties that are being tore down now by Koopman, we did not own some of those properties.
Correct.
Okay. Could you tell us the difference? I was under the assumption, some of the other Alderman's talked to, that we owned those properties, like in the one in particular in James and my ward, the grocery store.
Castings, I believe that's called, correct?
Correct.
We have the, when we do inspections on properties and they've been vacant for quite a while, and an owner may have abandoned it, tenant may have abandoned it, and we do our process on inspections and then we do violation notices and we're able to get inside the property and we realize that they're structurally unsound. That's when we say, okay, it may be private property, however, the structure's unsound and it's now actually a life and safety hazard for the residents of Rock Island. And so we do have the power and the ability to tear down those structures.
Okay. And where does the money come from?
The money for those demolitions comes from a variety of different pockets of money. Some may be through TIF, some may be through CDBG, and some may be through other funding sources within the city.
Okay. And I believe with this one, we will put a lien on that property because someone owns it?
If we do end up having to tear them down, yes, we do have a lien on the property for the cost of the demolition for the effort, for the contract that we hired. And then if, let's say, we did the Castings one, we play it out here and we demo it and there is someone who says, I would like to buy that now. They have to contact the third party, the private owner who owns it. Yes, there's a lien on it. And we'd be happy to release the lien provided we have a redevelopment plan for that particular parcel.
Well, I'd like to say, not on behalf of James, but myself, the neighbors that live there are very happy that it is gone because it was a problem. You know, people going in there, critters and that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the explanation.
You're welcome.
All right. Ready for roll call?
Alderman Mayberry.
Aye.
Spagaddis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Shep.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item number 10.
A resolution supporting river actions, pursuit of grant funds for a partial replica of the first railroad bridge to span the Mississippi River.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion?
Mayor, just a question here, and I don't know who would be best to answer this, but what it says at the bottom here, it says whereas successful grant applications require the commitment of nearby cities. Are we anticipating a financial cost?
No, we are not.
Okay.
This is just in support of this project. At this point, obviously, the city could do that if they wished and everything else, but, and you know, there's always asks out there, but the intent of this is to support the project.
Okay.
A historic project that ties Rock Island in with this whole thing.
Okay. And I'm not necessarily asking, as in opposition, do we just curious?
No. At this point, there is no ask, no commitment of monies.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? I think it's a great opportunity to put our name onto a wonderful project.
Yeah.
All right. Roll call.
Alderman Mayberry.
Aye.
Spagaddis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Shep.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Thank you. Kathy Wine was here to represent if there was any questions. Thank you, Kathy. All right. Item number 11.
Claims. I'll read A through F first. A, report from the Human Resources Department regarding payment in the amount of $13,412.52 to Lars Renberg of Rock Island, Illinois for general liability claim. B, report from the Human Resources Department regarding payment in the amount of $35,000 to Teresa Doppler of Rock Island, Illinois for general liability claim. C, report from the Information Technology Department regarding payment in the amount of $42,394 to Promivo LLC of Burlington, Kentucky for Google G Suite annual renewal and support maintenance for the year from December 28th, 2018 through December 27th, 2019. D, report from the Information Technology Department regarding payment in the amount of $20,753.59 to System Innovators of Chicago, Illinois for the iNova Software annual update and support maintenance for the year July 1st through, 2018 through June 30th, 2019. E, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number one in the amount of $105,708 to Crafton Railroad Company of Andalusia, Illinois for the Southwest Railroad Spur Repairs Project for services provided from July 9th, 2018 through September 4th, 2018. And F, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment in the amount of $11,985 to JC Cross Company of Davenport, Iowa for the emergency repair of one Hoffman Eration Tank Blower.
Move to accept the reports and authorize payments as recommended for claims items A through F.
Second.
Moved to second. Is there any discussion? Are you none? Roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Aye.
Spagaddis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Shep.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried. And now claims, G through I. Report G, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number 11 in the amount of $249,394.97 to General Constructors Incorporated of Bettendorf, Iowa for the Outfall 7 relocation project for services provided from July 21st, 2018 through August 31st, 2018. H, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number eight in the amount of $62,637.50 to Centennial Contractors of the Quad Cities Incorporated of Moline, Illinois for the 2017-2018 sidewalk and pavement patching program for services provided from July 11th, 2018 through September 6th, 2018. And I, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number four and final in the amount of $232,090.82 to Miller Trucking and Excavating of Silvis, Illinois for the Lincoln Court Reconstruction 17th to 20th Streets Project for services provided from January 6th, 2018 through July 12th, 2018.
Move to accept the reports and authorize payment as recommended for claims items G through I.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion?
Due to the nature of my employment, I will be recusing myself from this vote.
We could have a roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Aye.
Spagaddis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Shep.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item number 12.
There's an adjustment on this item. Claims for the weeks of September 7th through September 13th in the amount of $1,905,232.66 on September 14th through September 20th in the amount of $320,810.23. There will be no payroll.
Move to allow the claims and payroll.
Second.
My mistake. Move to allow the claims.
Claims.
Not the payroll. Thanks for correcting me, Judith.
And Alderman Clark, were you the second?
I second with the claims.
Okay. Moved to second. Any discussion?
What happened to the payroll?
There was an error.
It's a budget cut.
There was an error, so it'll have to be brought back at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Sorry, guys.
Got to have a little humor here. All right. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Aye.
Spagaddis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Shep.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 13.
ACH payments for the month of August in the amount of $968,542.1.
Motion to approve the ACH payments?
Second.
It's moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Mayberry.
Aye.
Spagaddis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Shep.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 14.
Purchase card claims for the period from July 27th, 2018 through August 27th, 2018 in the amount of $93,695.49.
Move to approve the purchase card claims.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have one and I'll address it to our city clerk. The payment to IML for the convention that we weren't able to attend, is that in this or will that be in the next?
I'm not sure that it was in this one. It might have been in the previous one already because it was done on the P card.
Right.
When the reservation, the registration was made and that was July or August.
Okay. I think there was, Mayor, were you going also?
I was not.
You was not. I think Ivory and I were the only two. I believe we need to contest those charges.
I second that.
Well, because we didn't go. You know, nothing from nothing leaves nothing. We were not able to go because there was a strike going on at the hotel there and myself and Ivory do not cross picket lines. And we had already paid to go and from what they told us, they were not going to reimburse us, which is garbage. I'll be nice and not say what.
But at this point, it looks like it's already been paid.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. I didn't know whether it was in this tonight or you're saying it might have been two weeks ago that we paid it.
Or last month.
Right.
Yeah. I don't know.
Request reimbursement, basically.
Well, from IML, but they may not. They may deny it.
Right. But you have to make the request.
Okay. All right. He wants to make a request. He's already made the request, hasn't he? You've already made the request.
And they said no?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
So we'll argue with them. But we shouldn't be charged for something that they knew there was a strike going on and they let us know what, a few days before it was going to happen.
Well, they waited till it was past their cancellation thing to let people know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Aye.
Spagaddis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Shep.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 15.
Report from the Police Department regarding the purchase of the ballistic vest uniform shirt carrier with Molly, the Blackhawk Strike Platform, and the Axon Molly compatible body camera attachment in the amount of $14,524.80.
Move to approve the purchase as recommended.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Mayberry.
Aye.
Spagaddis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Shep.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 16.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding bids for the DeSoto renovations project recommending the bid be awarded to Estes Construction of Davenport, Iowa in the amount of $49,219.50.
Move to award the bid as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion?
Chandler or Ryan, would you just remind us and the folks watching at home what exactly the DeSoto renovations project is?
Sure. The DeSoto building is located at the end of, gosh, Third Avenue. And the city owns it. It's an old DeSoto dealership. And what we did is we renovated it and we have two tenants within it. It's an arts facility, if you will. The Woodturners have the front side of the property. In the back, the potters have been in there for quite a while. And we're working with both of those groups now to understand how to engage the public to bring them into the space. The building has suffered some damage through water and so we need to work on the southwest corner of the property with some brick repair, some tuck pointing, and some other renovations.
I think this was something that came to your attention early on when you started. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So I just, I wanted to commend you for the follow-through because I know you've had a lot of things on your plate here. And this could have been perceived by other directors in other cities as something of not great importance because maybe it's not the biggest economic driver, but it is part of what makes our downtown special is that we incubate and support artists and their craft. And this is a perfect example of that and our commitment to that as a city. So I wanted to thank you for following up and getting this here to us tonight.
Thank you.
Chandler, hold on. I got two questions. One, was the, do we know was the damage caused by the tenants or just the structure of the building?
It was just through the design of how the water was leaving the roof. It all collected on the west side of the building and came back to that southwest corner. It was just such a massive amount and it really wasn't designed very well. And over time, it just decimated the bricks back there.
Sure. And then secondly, I see that a Rock Island-based company was the second lowest bidder, the only other bidder for the project. I know Alderman Mayberry has voiced his desire to have us be able to support businesses that are, you know, with the purchases that the city does, that we can support businesses that pay property taxes and reside within the city of Rock Island. I know that we are exploring new changes to our procurement practices, namely the DBE program that's in early infancy, but I know other communities have a preference hiring practice of if it's like a 2% difference or something like that, it goes to a local business. Now, there's a leviathan of, you know, that's a bit of a job to do, just like our DBE program is starting out to be. But perhaps while we are exploring a DBE, we can also consider ways in which we can try to have Rock Island taxpayers' dollars go towards Rock Island businesses. So that's my only request is we can keep it in mind. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Get a roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Aye.
Spagaddis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Shep.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 17.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding a request for proposals for the professional management of Sunset Marina recommending the contract be awarded to Founders Three Management Company, F3 Marina of Milwaukee, Wisconsin with the terms as stated in the report and for the five-year contract period of October 1st, 2018 through September 30th, 2023.
Move to award the contract as recommended, subject to minor attorney modifications, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents.
Second.
Quick. Moved to second. Any discussion?
I have two quick questions.
Sure.
I'm not sure who to address these two, to F3 or the city attorney or city manager.
Start with Larry and let him.
Start with Larry. Okay. Sorry, Larry.
I'll do my best, but I may have to rely on the two experts you already mentioned.
So it was a really interesting 14-page contract. On page seven of 14, under number 11, term and termination, paragraph E, it says there's a management fee paid for 90 days at descending rates. And I don't have any particular issue with that. I was just curious what types of things we would be paying F3 to help us with for 90 days. Is there anything in particular that comes to mind?
Sure. Obviously, you've got a lot of records transitioned. Obviously, once we allow them to take over as management, the day-to-day record-keeping, day-to-day operations is fully 100% their responsibility. We won't see any of those records. We'll see a monthly and a weekly report kind of compilation. We'll have to transition back into have some of the policies changed, have some of the rates changed, some of those things that we wouldn't want to make sure that we've got three months of transition rather than just giving us a key back and walking away and saying cheers, figure out what we did. So that's why there's a 90-day transition period in there.
That's what I assumed. I just wanted to ask the question. And then on page 12 of 14, the third bullet from the top, there's a note under that paragraph about the websites, cost for website will be a Marina/owner expense, approximately $2,500, beginning 2019. Is that a annual expense or a one-time expense?
It should be an annual expense.
Annual.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Mayor, I just wanted to say, I know we've started this conversation not quite two years ago, about two years ago, roughly.
About, yeah.
I know for a long time, the question of the Marina has been kind of hanging over this body through different councils, different mayors, different city managers have kind of stumbled around. And, you know, I think the thing that's been clear to me personally along the way is that the Marina is beautiful and it is such a great geographic asset that we have. And I don't, and I never have joined the course of people who've, you've said, you you know, the city's done a, a bad job or whatever. You know, cities do certain things really well. Sewer, water, refuse, economic development, administration of our local laws and ordinances. But we can't be expected to be subject matter experts on all things, including managing a Marina like professionals. And I'm, just very briefly, just want to say I'm, I'm grateful, the representatives from F3, are you gentlemen there? Really cool, smart-looking guys, I'm not surprised. Thank you. Seriously, I, I appreciate you putting in the, the time and the expense to get us up to this point. And, and I think that you see what I see and what others have seen for a long time in this community is a great Marina with a whole lot of potential. And even with, you know, national trends of, you know, boating and things like that, there's, there's still always going to be the boating experience in Rock Island, you know? And, and how that's going to change, I think, you know, F3 is prepared for the future in Marina management and boating. And I hope this passes, and if it does, welcome to the city and we look forward to a great partnership.
Sure.
Also, if possible, the gentlemen have, came here, have traveled here, and I talked to them, this is in my ward also, if they would come up and add to the, just the highlights of what you're planning on doing in Sunset Marina for the city of Rock Island.
They have to put you on there.
Yeah, we want them on record. We want the people out here to know.
Yeah.
Who we giving this money to.
Yeah.
And why? Well, yeah, right. And James said, and why?
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Alan Judis. I'm the city vice president for F3 Marina.
And my name is Phil Cook, and I'm the county manager for F3 Marina.
So first, thank you very much for, for inviting us this evening to be part of the, part of the meeting here. Obviously, I think we are very honored to be here and honored to, to be able to, to manage this beautiful Marina. I think when, when we go through a selection process for marinas, it's important for us to really understand the type of Marina, understand the, the demand in, in terms of the, of the boating, but also it's important for us to be part of the community, right? This is, I think, has been a very successful, successful endeavor for us to be able to, to be, to be part of, you know, of marinas and especially this one. So thank you very much, appreciate it.
Yeah. Additionally, when we're trying to take over new Marina, the focus is trying to engage, as Alan mentioned, with the community, but also with the boaters as well to maintain the service level, in some cases help improve it, to make sure that the stakeholders that are taking part in the Marina are getting their full value of their slips. This can be from increasing, giving them more amenities, increasing hours of operation in some cases, and just being able to utilize customer surveys to continue to try to improve the Marina into the jewel of the city that we want it to be. Any other questions that we can answer for you guys?
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
And as we all up here know, Sunset Marina is ran by Public Works. And our director, Larry, did an excellent presentation, when was it, Mayor?
I lose track of time.
About three months ago.
Yeah, exactly, yes.
We had like between 80 and 100 people there. They all weren't boaters, and they made an excellent presentation telling us what they can do for us. And they've got five years to get it all complete. One of the main highlights was a restaurant down in Sunset Marina. Sunset Marina is run by Public Works. Sunset Park is run by the Park Department. And most people don't realize that, they just think it's just one thing. So I thank these gentlemen for coming tonight and being here on the job, because I believe you're from Milwaukee, is that correct? Yes. Okay, thank you.
They're just clarifying, unless, they're not opening a restaurant or anything else, they're going to help try to find one with us and everything else, so.
Right, to put down there.
I want to make sure there's clarification that.
Yeah.
That, the goal is to have one there.
Have a restaurant in Sunset Marina.
Okay, I just wanted.
Yes.
All right, very good. If we could have a roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
No.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genon.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Six eyes, one nay, motion carried.
Item eighteen.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding IDOT's bid opening for the 38th Street resurfacing, 7th Avenue to Blackhawk Road project, with IDOT recommending the bid be awarded to Brant Construction of Mylan, Illinois in the amount of $2,330,106.40.
Motion to concur with IDOT on the award of the contract as recommended.
Second. Move to second, any discussion?
Yes, Mayor, I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments here. I know that the last large-scale project we did with Brant Construction, obviously we had some significant delays, and there were a number of issues that came up with that project. They were the low bidder through this competitive bidding process with IDOT. These dollars come from the federal government through the state to the cities for an 80/20 match, if I'm not mistaken. So, you know, I just wanted to clarify for folks who are watching at home that obviously we still have a responsible bidder ordinance, and we had made changes, as councils made changes in the past to the emergency bidder list, based on performance and other factors as well. I just want to say, you know, for the record, you know, a, a, a large portion of this project is going to run through the sixth ward. This is a long time coming, 38th Street is in desperate need for the resurfacing project. We've obviously got our largest employer, Augustana College on this thoroughfare, residents, numerous businesses, and a whole lot of traffic. And I, I am optimistic that Brant is going to honor the timelines on this project, that it will be done on time, and that the concerns of the constituents will be met with excellent customer service. Anything else is not what we expect from any of our contractors. And I think that can be said, any project, we're going to hold all of our contractors to account to get it done and to do it safely, and I certainly hope that that is the case for this.
Very good. I think that it's, it's great news and, and exciting to see two major thoroughfares in the city of Rock Island getting resurfaced, being 18th Avenue, now 38th Street, from basically one end to the other. Both have needed it dramatically, drastically for years, and so it's, it's good to see that. It all happens in one year, basically, but.
Yeah, next year's going to be a big.
So, but it's, it's great. All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genon.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item nineteen.
Report from the Parks and Recreation Department regarding in ordinance amending Chapter 14, Article 2, Sections 14-20A, 38 and 14-20A, 44 of the Code of Ordinances relating to the prohibition of swimming, diving, and fishing off boat docks and ramps.
Move to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance. Second. Move to second, any discussion?
I have a quick question, if John can come up, please. So for all of us, including people watching from home, would you explain the changes? And also, would you detail the difference between a boat ramp dock and a pedestrian dock?
Sure. Shrewsbury Park and Sunset Marina have always been a part of the ordinance. We wanted to add Potter's Lake and Ben Williamson. Anywhere where you can dock a boat or you're going to ramp in and out of the water with a boat, we don't want swimming going on there, we don't want diving or fishing going on. We've had issues with boaters trying to get in and out, multiple fishing poles and lines in the water makes it difficult. And then we also have some pedestrian docks at Potter's Lake that are, and currently being refurbished through Public Works now, that will be put back in, they will be allowed to fish from those docks in Potter's Lake.
So how will the average person be able to tell the difference between a, a boat dock and a pedestrian dock?
We're, we're working on some signage right now with Public Works, it'll be posted clearly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Get a roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genon.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty.
Report from the Finance Department regarding in ordinance amending Chapter 15, Article 4, Sections 15-54B and 15-65B relating to late payment penalties, first reading.
Move to consider the ordinance as recommended.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Hearing that, roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genon.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 21.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding in ordinance vacating a segment of an east-west right-of-way east of 28th Street.
Move to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance.
Second. Move to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genon.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 22.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding a request from Hy-Vee Incorporated for a revision to an approved site plan in a PUD district at 2810 18th Avenue.
Move to approve the revised site plan as recommended.
Move to second, any discussion?
I have a few questions.
This is in relationship to, I guess, the entry and exit, which, we were just given
some maps just, as, just before the council meeting started, so I'm curious about if someone could explain the, the fuel tanker routes in and out of the property. I think I saw one map that was in here pertaining to it. And then after that, I have a couple of questions about what would be what looks like the east entryway, but I'll wait until the fuel tankers is explained first.
Sure. When we started talking with Hy-Vee a number of months ago about this opportunity to move forward on this PUD, one of the, one of the, one of the issues we had was how will traffic move throughout the site? We wanted to see that. 28th Street, that little alley off to the west-hand side of the site itself was of concern. How will the tankers move in and out? How are they going to access it? How are they going to fuel, drop their fuel and everything else? We want to understand that. So you can see that the turning radius and the turning movements of the tankers are identified on the map itself.
Which map is that? There's, is that the one with the real long line with the arrows?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
C 2.2.
Right, I got it.
So that's how the, the tankers will be coming in and out with the turning movement.
So are they coming in on 18th Avenue on the east side of the project?
That, that's how I read the map, yes, sir.
Well, it doesn't show the driveway on the map here, it's cut off.
Well, it would be coming through the, the Hy-Vee, the main entrance to the Hy-Vee.
And does that entrance need to be modified at all on 18th Avenue? Does it?
Not as far as, as I know offhand, so far as the turning movement.
Because I know two cars coming in opposite directions, coming in and out, they have to be careful that they're both.
I understand.
On their own side of the driveway there. So they would come through the property, fuel up the underground tanks, and exit on, on this map, what is called the alley, or what you also refer to as 28th Street.
Correct.
And then they would exit onto 18th Avenue and turn either right or left, is that correct?
From what I take here, they're turning to the left, right-hand turn would probably be relatively impossible with a turning movement for the, for a semi.
Would they be prohibited from turning right?
Well, I think to make such a, a sharp right-hand turn would be impossible for a semi, unless it was a little good.
Wouldn't be possible for them to do that?
I don't think so, sorry.
Okay. Then on that, hold on, might, might be able to use the same, the same map, I'm sorry. On that east entrance into the proposed gas station, there's a bump out.
Mm-hmm.
And I was wondering, and then there's also some little square objects that, I don't know if those are dumpsters or whatever they are on either side of that driveway there, can you explain what those are?
From what I'm understanding, this to be that it would be a crosswalk across there, you see the striping, so it's pedestrian, identify as pedestrian access, crosswalk. And then those two little squares would be, either be a, an ADA ramp, or it would just be the landing pad where, where the sidewalk would end.
Oh, I see, okay. So I'm asking because those aren't identified, at least not, not by anything I can see, except maybe a small number. Then that big bump out to the right or to the east, what is the purpose of that?
Well, that is actually to help control traffic, to, to give the people coming in and the turning movement on the site a little bit more depth, if you will, but also provide some landscaping and access. It will provide a little bit of a, of a pedestrian refuge as well, as you see from the sidewalk that's identified there.
Okay, and then lastly, in the staff report, the second paragraph, it says the site, Hy-Vee initially proposed 2,832 square feet.
Yes, sir.
And then later on in that sentence, it says the site was approved in 2010, and now Hy-Vee proposes 1,212 square feet for a kiosk structure. So what happened, I don't know if you are able to answer this or not, between the decision, the original 2,800 and now 1,200?
Sure, I, just from my knowledge of, of how retailers work, and we have some Hy-Vee representatives here as well can answer the question, but eight years is quite a long time for a concept to stay effective. And they're constantly looking at ways to update their concepts, make, maximize the amount of sales, square footage, and make sure that they are being efficient with, with their investment. That'd be my take on it, but Hy-Vee is here, if you have any questions.
I'd like to hear from them.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Chandler.
Good evening. John Brem with Hy-Vee. We've just gone through a process of design iterations over the last eight years where the, the previous project that was approved here was 2,800 square feet, that was about as small a gas station as we did back in 2010. Since then, we've just modified our business model, and, and it's been shrunk down to this 1,200-square-foot kiosk structure that you see here. We're trying to roll this particular, I'll just continue to refer to it as kiosk.
That's what it said in the report.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we're rolling this, this model out to 10 locations, Rock Island being one of them. This is the latest business model to bring some of the amenities from the store out into the parking lot and provide that, the gas so that our customers can redeem their perks and fuel savers.
So that was your choice to downsize that project and square footage?
Not my personal choice, no, that was, that was a corporate choice.
The company you work for. Okay. And were you also privy to the plans suggested from a group called Independent Rock Island for keeping the building that exists there now and using that?
Correct.
In the development?
Yes, yes, I was privy to that.
And what was your response to that?
There was a three-pronged response. We wrote a, an email to council member, member Parker last week. I'll give him, or I'll give you the same answer I wrote to him. One is the business model. The CVS building is 9,500 square feet, more or, more or less. That's way more space than we'd ever need for anything that we want to do that close to our store. Like I said, our gas station is an extension of the store, so the services and the products that we want to provide out in the C store, we don't want to duplicate with the, with the items that we have in the store. Another problem with it was the building sits right on the property line between our parking lot and right on the east edge of that half-acre lot. And it would serve as a barrier to connectivity. People in our parking lot wouldn't be able to drive over to the gas station and fuel up if that existing building stayed put. And the third is presence. My understanding was Rock Island, or unconnected Rock Island.
Independent.
Undependent, excuse me, Rock Island proposed using the west side of that building as a separate tenant space and putting the, the C store on the east side. That would reduce our presence to traffic into 18th Avenue. And so that was another, another strike against the project from our perspective.
Thank you, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you.
Could you explain what this kiosk model is? Is it not a store that you walk into?
It is, it's a, it's a small store. It has, it's, it's a convenience store. It's just, it's just a smaller footprint than we've been doing in the past. It has all the same services, just smaller scale, not as much stuff.
And will a resident still be able to use the fuel savers at the current gas stations offered in Rock Island?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Is there anyone from Independent Rock Island wants to speak?
My name is Peter Rucklick. Vicki, my wife and I live at 2128.
Make sure you sign, when you get done, sign in there, please, thank you.
My wife and I, Vicki, my wife Vicki and I live at 2128 32nd Street in Rock Island. The residents initiative Independent Rock Island has been trying to send a signal to our development community that Rock Island is open, ripe for investment to occur on our 18th Avenue, 30th Street, 14th Avenue, community, commercial district area. In June of last year, Alan Carmen sent John Brem, Hy-Vee's director of site planning, an email describing our effort. Tanner, can you pass out the designs? Has everybody seen this design?
I have.
Do we know what we're talking about? Okay, all right. Alan sent an email to John Brem describing our effort to maintain, the initiative's effort, to maintain and enhance the people-oriented streetscape on 18th Avenue and 30th Street, 14th Avenue, community commercial area that creates a unique investment opportunity. Included in that email were images of John Carson's rendering of a Hy-Vee gas station using part of the old CVS building as a convenience store. In July of last year, Alan received a call from the director of real estate for Hy-Vee saying that they would be reviewing our concept drawings and would get back in touch after they had completed their assessment or if they had any questions. Not having heard anything from them, Alan reached out to Hy-Vee in September of last year, and then again in March of this year, but still nothing. We were seeking an opportunity for early involvement, early involvement with Rock Island in Hy-Vee's decision-making process. We realized Hy-Vee has a, a team of design people, and that's their job. And we were trying to have input that would be able to reflect their own expressed drive for innovation. They're expressed encouragement to test new ideas, a leadership role in involvement in communities, and a passion to promote health in people's daily lives. Back in May of last year, Randy said he liked our Hy-Vee design, and Ryan said of our To the Street Dunkin' Donuts design, concept design, that it was better than what the city had come up with for an alternative to their corporate design suggestion. design, concept design, that it was better than what the city had come up with for an alternative to their corporate design suggestion. Defer making a decision on this, Planning Commission's recommendation on Hy-Vee's modified site plan for the gas station kiosk. Defer to give an opportunity to create for Ryan, Randy, John Carstens, and the rest of URI's Independent Rock Island's design team, design wing, to speak to Hy-Vee's concerns. They have concerns. We acknowledge that. To speak to their concerns about meeting their business objectives, their capital expanse of converting a building rather than building new, the capital, opening a gas station as quickly as possible, they're concerned, the connectivity to the main store on 18th Avenue, and needing a smaller space than originally planned eight years ago. John just talked about that. Well, using the existing building, John had sectioned off a certain square footage, where the rest of the building would still maintain retail space, a number of which could be a restaurant on the street. So if Hy-Vee's desire now is for a smaller square foot, then that can be factored in using the existing building. So I would say create, defer, defer, to check out, listening to their concerns, legitimate concerns, getting a response from city staff, from input from Independent Rock Island, and include Steve Geifman in this meeting to address the last point about needing a smaller space, and then any tenant improvement issues that might come up, because he's the owner of the site for the store. As Randy has said when hearing me talk about Rock Island's unique combination of assets, all the pieces are here. And it doesn't have to take a lot of money or time from consultants, outside consultants, to make a high-quality, appropriately-designed project happen. Just all of us, our creative efforts, albeit later than we had wanted, to put the pieces together. We can do this. Any questions?
Thank you. Did you sign that, Peter? Did you sign that? Did you put your name on there, please?
Is there anyone else in the audience that wanted to speak either for or against what was just said?
I'm curious for Mr. Brim, right, John? Thank you, first and foremost, for wanting to build the fuel station in Rock Island. I do appreciate your interest in expanding your business here, and we want to be as accommodating as possible. Just what is your initial reaction to the thought of taking a pause to potentially talk out some concerns that our residents have with the development? I mean, is this something that has to happen now, or is, I mean, has the cards been laid how they are?
Yeah, I'll be direct here. The investment's been made, the building's been purchased, the steel's been purchased. The asbestos has already been removed from this building, the power has been shut off. The water and gas are not shut off. They were supposed to be shut off. Otherwise, the building would not be there today. It was scheduled for demolition today. It will be demolished this week, one way or the other. And it is, it's been my mission, or given to me, my mission to make sure that these first 10 kiosks get built before the end of 2018. So, time is of the essence to us. We need to get started on this project.
I also have another question for staff, Chandler. Can you give me an update on our zoning ordinance update with, is it Ansulin Glink, the consultant's doing that?
Ansulin Glink?
Yes. Where are we with that? I know that I voiced my interest in form-based codes with, I believe when we had this very same conversation about Dunkin' Donuts like a year ago, you had suggested an overlay district for 18th, 30th, 14th, you know, potentially. Where are we at with any of these conversations? Where are we at with the zoning update?
I have one of the best experts talking to Ansulin Glink.
So I'm looking at Ryan.
There you go.
Just to back up a little bit, one of the things that we needed to figure out was who would be the recommending body for all of these new articles that are coming through. So we figured that out. So we still have a BZA and a Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission would be hearing these recommendations. Right now, the consultants are looking at our transitional areas, so those pockets in the city where you have business zones right adjacent to residential areas. And the attorneys and the consultants are looking at how we can make sure that as we move forward that those transitional zones are treated in a different way. So, and then we'll start moving forward. In terms of the form-based codes, that's something that we've mentioned to the consultants. They have various opinions on them, and they think that they only really work in certain economic climates. That doesn't mean that we can't try to do something like that, but it is a balancing act with requiring too much on a developer versus requiring not enough. So we need to find that space. So it's a part of the discussion. We're still thinking about it. But I think the idea of starting small is smart. So if we identified maybe a corridor where we could try, that's definitely something we could do.
I would encourage you to do so as you continue your conversation with our consultant. Obviously, I mean, how many agenda items do we, as a council, get even five, four people to come here and talk about? I mean, there's an appetite, and they're not part of any formal organization or, you know, city initiative. This is a group of residents that have come together.
And I do know that I've talked many times with Peter and made suggestions about Peoria. We know, we've looked at some information that they've done, and ways to go about getting something like that here. So it's a possibility.
It's appreciated and highly encouraged on my part.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to just make a quick comment before we vote. I really liked Independent Rock Island's alternative plan, and I wanted them to know that. Unfortunately, it doesn't fit into Hy-Vee's plans or desires. But I think Independent Rock Island's contribution is very valuable, and I want to continue to encourage you to continue to make plans available or suggestions whenever appropriate. Yes. All right. We could have a roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
No.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Six eyes, one nay. Motion carried.
Item 23.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding a request from Ballantyne Trujillo for rezoning from B1 Neighborhood Business District to B4 Highway Intensive Business District, 26, 27, 7th Avenue.
Move to consider, well, clarification, please. Move to deny the rezoning as recommended and consider a special use permit request from the applicant as recommended. That just means that they are able to apply for the special use?
Right.
That is my motion.
Right.
Second. Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 24.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding a request from Elizabeth Narsky for rezoning from R4 1-6 Family Residence District to B1 Neighborhood Business District at 2321, 2325, and 2327 7th Avenue. I believe the city attorney has a comment.
Yes, we have a clarification here with regard to if the motion is to approve the rezoning, I would just ask that you add and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance. If there actually is going to be a zoning change, I will have to have an ordinance. If the motion was to deny the recommendation, then that language would not need to be added.
Okay. Okay, clear. We have a motion.
Move to approve the rezoning as recommended with the proposed landscaping and alley access point and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second. Move to second. Any discussion?
Is there anyone in the audience that wants to talk about this? I had two calls about it, and they, people usually don't call me. All right.
Roll call.
Alderman Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Parker.
AWOL.
Ship. Genin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Good. Good job. Good project. Item 25.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding a request from U-Haul Company of Iowa and Illinois for a special exception for an authorized use at 3840 46th Avenue, Blackhawk Road, for an interior self-storage facility.
Motion to approve the special exception to authorize the interior self-storage use and submitted site plan with landscaping signage and other site improvements as proposed outlaw at the northwest corner of the site as recommended.
Second. Move to second. And I think there are people here that would also like to speak on this issue. So if there's some people out here who'd like to speak in favor of it, U-Haul or whoever would like to speak about the project real quick?
I'm Randy Dixon, president of the U-Haul Company of Iowa. This has been kind of a long road, and we're glad to be here and hope that the motion carries. And we're really excited to put a new face on an old building, bring some vitality to the area, hopefully help our neighbors out with the added traffic there that our business will bring. So if you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them.
In the seventh word, we've had some neighborhood block club meetings since the last time we've seen you. And one of the questions I've asked residents was this proposed site. And the response, I haven't really heard any negatives, other than they're glad that it'll be beautified, the trees that you're planting, and that there is an opportunity for an outlot for some, another business to move in. So from what I've heard from the majority of the residents, they're welcoming you into the area.
Great. That's great.
And I just want to say to you, sir, you know, a special thanks to you and to U-Haul for staying the course with Rock Island here. I know it's been an up-and-down journey, for sure. And I think there's a tale to be told here about kind of wanting what you can't have and not recognizing what's at your front door. And you guys came knocking, and I understand, you know, early on, this idea, well, we lost Kmart, we need to replace it with retail. Well, retail's gone with the wind, right? I mean, it is what it is now these days, and it's not how it was 10 years ago, 20 years ago. You guys have a successful business model, you recognize the location, and for whatever lack of support there was in the past, I think that's firmly in the past now. I expect this, and I hope, it passes tonight. And we're going to be grateful to see one of our big corners, spaces there on Blackhawk Road, have a new business in there that's going to care for the site and beautify the strip and bring more traffic down. So we thank you for coming to Rock Island.
Thank you. You won't be disappointed.
And it doesn't really necessarily say this in the motion, but you do more than just indoor storage units, correct?
Yes, we have truck and trailer sharing, of course, and we have a retail component as well with a full line of moving supplies, and then also hitch and bike rack sales. So we have a, we do have a retail component to this as well.
And you'll install the hitches where you're on site?
Yes.
And will you also have propane filling capacity?
We would probably like to explore that in the future, once we can decide where to put it on the property. Yes.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this? Or, if not, okay.
I'll be very brief. My name is David Levin. I'm a real estate broker with Rural Commercial. I live at 3201 36th Avenue in Rock Island. You'll recall a year ago, I spoke against this proposal at BZA only because we in the real estate community wanted to have an opportunity to see if we could fill this big-box retail space. The world has changed in the last year. We now have had maybe two showings on this property in one year. It's been exposed to over 39,000 people across the world with only two showings. What I told the BZA, I'll tell you. Since last year in July, when this went before BZA, the following stores are now vacant. Former Country Market in Rock Island, still vacant, of 31,750 square feet. Toys R Us, 43,000 square feet. Best Buy will become vacant next month, of 42,000 square feet. Yonkers, of 107,451 square feet. Sam's Club, of 134,550 square feet. Shopko, which has been vacant for 14 years, of 104,000 square feet. Sears Appliance, up on Avenue of the Cities, of 11,960 square feet. Kmart, of which is 84,800 square feet. Rock Valley Plaza, directly to the east, is 43% vacant. Take in consideration a bunch of other small shop space, you now have over 692,000 square feet of vacant space. Also, an article that we read in the real estate journals shows that this is happening around the country, not just in Rock Island, Illinois. But the longer these big boxes sit, the worse they get. Deterioration happens. Sooner or later, the roof will have continued problems, the mechanicals will have tremendous problems. Garbage, I personally relocated garbage on that parking lot over the last number of months. I get calls from the city. We've had the grass cut there. So we welcome U-Haul. They've done a very nice job on the Iowa side of the market, and we're very happy that they're going to be taking this over. Thank you.
Would you like to speak opposed to this? Anybody here that's opposed that'd like to speak against this happening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Don't forget to sign in when you get a chance.
I don't have a pen, and there's no one here. My name is Jim Tansey. I'm with Hawkeye Commercial Real Estate. I'm a commercial real estate developer, investor, and broker in town, and I've represented the Stroud and Siegel families, who have lived in Rock Island and owned Herman's for many years, converted it a couple of years ago to the Storage Hub, which is indoor, climate-controlled self-storage in the nearby area there. They invested a lot of money in it. It's been a, not giving away anything confidential by saying that it's not yet 50% full. I know of one other indoor climate-controlled storage on the Davenport side that is also struggling to maintain 50% occupancy. My point is, anybody who looks at this from a developer's or from your perspective is looking for, what's the highest and best use for this property? How do we put it back in service in the highest and best use? That's what everyone wants to get done. I personally don't believe this is it. I get it. I understand. When I own a vacant property, I want to put it into service as quickly as possible. But I guess I would caution you against the sugar high of getting somebody in there when it's not the best use for that property. I don't, it's going to feel good initially. I have nothing against U-Haul. I think they're a fabulous company. I'm glad they're interested in Rock Island. I just think you're going to crush existing local family-owned businesses in the process and not add anything to the community. I think it's a bad decision, personally. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak about this issue? Let's see, hand. Come on up.
My name is Gary Siegel. I live at 12 Deer Run in Rock Island. Would the city manager please pass out the pictures to all the representatives?
Sign in, please.
As Mr. Levin stated a little while ago, he was against the U-Haul project a year ago. However, he was opposed to the project because he said there's too much landscaping on their proposal. Now, he has skin in the game, and now he's changing his mind. So what is it, gentlemen? So what is it, gentlemen? Too much? Not enough. Number two, I passed out pictures to all of you today of U-Haul, Kmart, and West Davenport. As you can see, what you have right out on West Kimberly Road, which is equivalent to Blackhawk Road, is a line of trucks. If you look across the whole project, you see equipment from U-Haul, you see other trucks. Is this the type of business, or is this the environment you want on 38th Street, your main corridor to Rock Island? Do you want a business that isn't going to bring you any sales? Tax revenue? Is not going to grow traffic in the area? Basically, will probably not help other businesses in the surrounding area? Number two, that building, no matter what Mr. Levin says, potentially is our number-one retail business or building in Rock Island. If we take this out of the market, you're never going to get a big store to come into Rock Island, or at least out on Blackhawk Road, which to me is still our number-two area for development. U-Haul representative all mentioned, also mentioned that if they approve the zoning change, they're going to bring other businesses in here. Well, to me, that's like me telling you, if you let me put this building in here, I'm going to bring you four other businesses. Well, what do you know what they're going to bring in? If you believe that, I could probably sell you swamp land in Florida. Gentlemen, if you look around the Quad Cities, you can go out on Highway Five in Silvis, the area's being developed. You go to East Moline, you have a whole new retail and hotel project going up. You go to Moline, you got hotels and other businesses going up in downtown Moline. You go out here where the old Chevrolet building is, all new projects going in there. You go to Davenport, you got Costco coming in, you got Portello's coming in. So, gentlemen, there is a future for Rock Island, and we can develop that area, and I just think it's not, it's not all gloom and doom for Rock Island. Again, I say to you, do not, I hope you don't pass this, because it will definitely hurt any development on Blackhawk Road if you let the storage facility in. Also, I think we have enough storage facility in the immediate area. You have over 100 units behind Hy-Vee and Moline. You have at least two units over in Mile and over the bridge. You have Storage Hub in Rock Island, which is over 200 climate-controlled, state-of-the-art storage units. You also approve 500 units in West Rock Island. I don't think the market needs any more storage units. So anyway, gentlemen, thank you for your time, and I appreciate you turning down this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your investment in Rock Island. Appreciate it. All right, any other discussion? There's nobody else out there? We will take a roll call.
I have a question, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't know, I didn't know you were meeting discussion on the council.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm wondering, I'm not real clear about this, but I did get a few phone calls and had a few questions from people. If this is approved and U-Haul takes over the building, do they own the property? Will U-Haul own the property?
Yes, we will.
Okay, and in the proposal, there's a, an outlaw in the northwest corner designated, and that's, that's property that will be controlled by U-Haul, is that correct?
Yes.
So do we have any agreements with U-Haul about developing that, that outlaw?
Yes, we initially had a development agreement that's still in place. I believe, yes.
And can you summarize that in terms of, you know, what U-Haul's and the city's agreement is about?
Well, as far as the outlaw goes, I don't remember the exact size, but we, we agreed to offer that property at fair market value, should anyone be interested in developing that, that corner.
So you, you would be selling that piece of property to the interested party?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's all I need to ask right now.
Okay. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Nay.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Yes.
Alderman Talonair.
No.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Alderman Ship.
Aye.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Five eyes, two nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-six.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding a proposed granting of an easement from the City of Rock Island to allow McLaughlin Body Company access through city property to all of Lot 1, 2, and 3 in Quad City Industrial Center, Second Edition in the City of Rock Island, County of Rock Island, State of Illinois.
Motion to grant the easement and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the grant of easement as recommended, subject to minor attorney modifications.
Second. Move to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-seven.
Report from the city clerk regarding requests from Calvary International Revival Church for a street closing of 6th Street between 12th Avenue and 13th Avenue on Sunday, September 30th, 2018, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and sound amplification for their children's ministry inauguration and fundraising.
Move to approve the request as recommended?
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Passes.
We're at twenty-eight. Other business. Do you have someone that signed up?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I can't read, I apologize.
Reetha.
Reetha Bags.
Bags?
Yes.
Bags?
Bear with me, because I've never done this before, so I don't know what I'm doing, and I know I've only got a few minutes.
You're fine.
I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, maybe there needs to be an improvement or an amendment to a city ordinance or a new one put in place, and I need to know how to go about that. It's in regards to, there is a city ordinance in place for residential property, keeping like their weeds and their grass 10 inches or below. What there is nothing in place is on trees and shrubs on private properties. Right now, I don't want anybody to go through what I'm going through right now. I've lost my home insurance because the property next door to me has had two dead trees and a half-dead tree that I have been battling with the city and the homeowner for many years, and trying to prevent where I'm at today. And I don't, I have called the city on numerous occasions and talked to different people. What can I do? I can't get anything done here. These trees have fell on my property like three times in the last eight months, and I've had to turn in claims, and I've lost my insurance. I spent a week calling insurance companies, trying to get insurance, and I've been denied, 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 until finally somebody did take me, but my impairment has doubled. It's not fair that I am being told there's nothing can be done because there's no city ordinance. It's not fair that I'm being told, well, you can cut it back, you can do this. I spent 15 years trimming one of those trees back off my property and paying, and paying to have my property sprayed because it would be infested with box elderbugs. That's not fair. It's not fair that I'm paying because this person is not maintaining their property. And it's not fair that the city is not there to help me and protect me against something like this, and I bet you I'm not the only one in Rock Island who is experiencing this issue. As a matter of fact, I know I'm not. I've talked to people that are very disgusted because they're dealing with the same stuff. And I want to know what can be done to change that. I want to know what the city can do to protect me and other people like me. This is not fair. I had to retire in 2015 because of health issues. I do not have the money to pay to make somebody take care of what they need to take care of. Can you please advise me what can be done to? I don't understand if there's a city ordinance that says 10 inches on the grass and weeds, why that can't be amended to include that they need to maintain their trees and shrubs? To me, I cut my trees down so it wouldn't damage other people's properties. I want to know why. They can't be held accountable to keep their trees topped, trimmed, and pruned. No residence needs a tree that's 50 feet tall. You know, when these trees, these, these trees are dead. Two trees were dead, and the one is half-dead. It fell on my property, the one fell on my property, and there wasn't even a wind. It just fell because it was disintegrated. I can't even get my garage fixed because nobody wants to climb up there and risk this tree falling on them. So can you please tell me what needs to be done to get the ordinance changed or improved so that it protects people like me instead of the homeowner or the rental, the rental property owner?
Are the trees still there?
They finally cut two of, the two dead ones down because it started damaging their property after it damaged mine. But there's still the half-dead one there that is close to my property. It keeps knocking my electrical wiring out of my, my home each and every time it does. My sofas and my gutters on my garage and my roof are damaged. I can't get them fixed, and there's no sense in fixing them until this tree is gone. I'm not paying to have their tree cut down. Why should I have to?
Do we have an ordinance that relates to tree trimming or cutting?
No.
No, we can put something together, and Dave, Dave can tell you, there's a long legal precedence on this issue, so we can put together a report for council on that, and you can make a determination how you want to move forward.
I hope so, because I'm not just, I'm not just doing this for me. I'm doing this for every Rock Island resident. Maybe some of you have the same problem, I don't know. But I don't think it's fair. If you choose to have trees and shrubs, then you choose to have the main, it's your responsibility to maintain them, so they don't damage like mine did. Like I said, I now had to pay double the insurance because of this, and I shouldn't have to, because nobody in this, this city. I've been working on this for probably 12 years to prevent this, and nobody in this city listened to me. Nobody backed me up. I even had housing inspection come out, and they flat-out told me, I agree with you, these are a danger, these are going to be a problem, but there's nothing I can do because there's no city ordinance.
Ma'am, I'm not sure why nothing was done before, and I know that you're not the only one, because I know personally of some similar cases.
Right. And that's why I'm here, because somebody needs to do something.
At this point in time, for whatever reason, that didn't happen before, it looks like we're going to look at an ordinance now.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, because it won't help me now. It's done. I mean, my property's damaged, and, and my insurance is double now, and I'm going to pay for that for the next several years, which I don't think is fair, but...
Well, we have ordinances about all kinds of other things, like you said, from grass.
Yeah, I don't understand why this wasn't included.
Arch cars, things on the front lawn, the height of fences, so it sounds to me like we're going to do a little research and come up with something.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there, nobody else has signed up? Is there anything the council would like to bring up?
I just wanted to say quickly that the Family Fund Day at the Martin Luther King Center was a great success. I wanted to thank Jerry and his staff. You guys did a wonderful job, as usual, and there was more people than I've ever seen there, so it was a wonderful time.
Ran out of candy, again.
And to add to that, the parade, which the mayor was at the front of, the parade was excellent also. And this year, Jerry, correct me if I'm wrong, we have five out-of-town drum and bugle corps that came from Minneapolis and Peoria, and they had a wonderful time also, and that's what we need.
Yes, I reported also, there was a event here in the Quad Cities, but we started it off in Rock Island as Mississippi River Cities and Towns Initiative. It brought in about 40 mayors from up and down the Mississippi, along with legislators from up and down the Mississippi, and around, there was about 150 people in attendance, and it was kicked off at Shreve Park last Tuesday evening. Loose track of days here. But once again, the city of Rock Island did a great job in presenting itself. There was a lot of compliments on the park. Then it was, there was another event held at the Blackhawk Park Lodge, and that represented itself very well, and got a lot of good compliments of the whole Quad Cities, but also, but, but those areas were very well-received, and continue to spread that word across those cities that the Quad Cities is worth coming to visit. And so it got some national news along with it, and it was interesting, the, I'll say Happy Joes, it's now called Diversified Group, it's Happy Joes plus some others, along with the Heart of America, committed at this show to reduce their use of plastics by 20% by the year 2020. They, neither one of those groups had really thought about that until we brought it forth with this organization. They got thinking about it and said, you know, it does make sense, and, and we're willing to step forward and make a public commitment to that, so that's one small area that positive came out of it, along with a lot of other things, good things they do, so it was, it was a great event.
All right? Anything else? If not, we have item number 29.
Executive Session, 5 ILCS 120, Section 2, C2, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, and 5 ILCS 120, Section 2, C21, discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed under this act, whether for purposes of approval by the body of the minutes or semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated by Section 2.06.
Move to go into executive session for the exceptions cited.
Second.
Move to second. All in favor?
No.
Aye.
I'm sorry, didn't turn the page.
Alderman Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Eyes, no nays, motion carried.